Thank you everybody for coming on a beautiful night. It's hard to be here. I appreciate you being here. I'm Dave Kendall, the Chair of the Missoula County Democrats. We're very fortunate to have a great slate of candidates to talk to us tonight about the school board election that's coming up on May...
Fifth.
Yeah, sixth. Fifth. Yeah, fifth. That's a good quiz there. That's good. Most of them passed. The Democratic Party is proud to host this kind of forum because I think it's one of the rare forums that we have where candidates can speak directly to the public about their views and for the public to understand what that is. We're also fortunate to have MCAT broadcasting this. It's also available on the web for downloads at any time from our website, which is missoula democrats.org. We, before I get to the forum, I just wanted to just acknowledge something that's true and important to us that has happened this week. In the state legislature, our sort of brave state legislature representatives from Missoula and elsewhere have fought and fought and won in expansion Medicaid. It was a subject of a forum we've had here in the past and I want to acknowledge that, you know, sometimes there's, you know, you wouldn't believe in politics and in life that where there's a will, there's a way. But, you know, in politics, it's not always true. Sometimes, however, it, there just has to be a will before there is a way and that's what is always true. And the candidates before us tonight have all said to themselves and now saying to the public that we have a will to serve the public and help make our school system excellent for everybody who's participating in it. So, the reason that we have this forum and subsequently after this meeting, after the forum, we'll decide whether to endorse in these races. We do that for two reasons. One is because equality education is a core democratic value, just as it is a core, you know, foundation of our democracy. The second is that in order to, for candidates to use the resources of the party, which are considerable when you're trying to run an election for maybe sometimes the first time, the only way we can offer those resources to those candidates is if they, if we do endorse. So, that's, that's the idea. So, without further ado, what we're going to do tonight, we're going to have opening remarks by each of the candidates and then we'll, for two minutes, and then we'll have a round of questions and answers that I ask everyone to just write down your questions on a piece of paper and I'll be reading them off. And then we'll end up with a one-minute closing. So, without further ado, I'm going to start with Grace Decker, who is, we're doing something innovative here. She is out of town, but she's appearing by Skype tonight. So, we'll see how this works, just to get, jump right into it. Grace, are you ready to go?
I am. I only have voice, but so I'll, I'll share without being seen.
Awesome. I find that always, voice is often better with Skype than video. Thank you, Grace. Go ahead and we'll keep going.
Okay. Okay. So, I will just introduce myself by saying that I'm Grace Decker and I've lived in Missoula for seven years and have been involved in and around education essentially that entire time. I currently work for Childcare Resources as an early childhood professional development specialist and I've previously been a preschool teacher and education program coordinator and as school director. And I also have a son who is a first grader at Willard School. So, because of those interests in my background and because of my current role as a mom of school, I'm sorry, but it's a good time for me to step up and offer this opportunity.
Great. Thanks, Grace. So, next we'll hear from Michael Smith.
Thank you. My name is...
Hold on for a quick second.
Thanks. Is this on? Am I working? My name's Mike Smith. I have been on the MCPS school board for five years. I am an engineer here in town. I work for WGM Group. I have two children in MCPS. One is a junior at Hellgate, one is a seventh grader at Washington Middle School. I have always been involved in my children's education and in the education system in some form or another, whether it be on PKAs. I've served on school boards when my children were in preschool and now here on the school board here. I think it's really important that the school board and that the public, I should say, has a, has a voice in the education of, in the development of public education, which is why I think this position on the school board is so important. I have put an awful lot of time and I, and I take my job on this board very seriously. As I said, I'm looking forward to the very important steps we have coming up, which would be, we have a school bond coming up in November to vote on. Hopefully, when we pass that, implementing that is going to be a huge project for over the next several years. I look forward to helping with that and also selecting the next superintendent that's going to be the leader, the face of our school district. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. And next we'll hear from John Fletcher.
Yes, I'm John Fletcher. Is this on?
Yeah, rest of the line.
I'm John Fletcher. I've served on many of our local government boards. I've got a total of 17 years' experience with service on the planning board, as a trustee of the public library, on the planning policy committee, the county board of adjustments, the citizen advisory board to the police department. And I mention that so that, so you can know that I've, I understand how it's, number one, a group effort. There are many voices on the school board. In my opinion, they need to be hushed voices or it's not a, you get my point. In addition, I've had a formal education at the University of Montana in education. I did my student teaching in Sally Dyer's fourth grade class at Willard School, but also spent years at Roosevelt School and St. Anthony's School. And since the 19, mid-1980s, I've been a volunteer in the school, so I still am. I'm at Hellgate High School as a writing coach. Additionally, I brought in my framed first paycheck stubs from both the elementary school, District One, and the Missoula County High Schools. This is back in the days when they were different. I think it's a good idea for at least one of the trustees to have been an employee of the schools and that also is something that I bring to it.
Thank you. And then Marsha Holland.
Hi. I don't know if any of you looked at my questionnaire online, but if you did, you're probably wondering why I'm here. Because in my haste to get it signed, when I checked the box next to the Democrat or Republican, I'm a lifelong Democrat. I'm from Butte. My family would be driving over and disowning me if they saw that I checked to the right, which I should have had a clue, left versus right. So, I'm really not a Republican. I'm really a lifelong Democrat. So, I apologize for that in the house. Get that corrected. I've been on the board for two terms and I wanted to be part of this conversation even though no one is running against me for District Four. I represent the Hellgate Elementary School District and so I sit as a high school trustee on the board. And although no one's running against me, so I will be seated by acclamation and there actually won't be an election and that's why also on the candidate questionnaire, I indicated a blank on endorsements because I won't be running a campaign because of the fact I'm unopposed. But I wanted to be here and hear the conversations. Just a tiny bit of background, I grew up in Butte and went to school here and then went to law school in Chicago and then ended up fighting a good fight as a public defender up in Alaska, representing seven villages along the Yukon River as a trial attorney and appellate attorney. And so, when I had the opportunity to move back here with my family, I worked part-time so I had the time to give back. So, I started volunteering at Hellgate Elementary and eventually ran for the school board and have discovered, I think as my fellow trustee Diane Lorenzen mentioned, I think she had a log that she went to 150 meetings last year. And so, it takes a lot of time and commitment to be truly involved as a school board member and because of my flexible job situation, I can do that and I can make a lot of meetings. I sit as the chair on the finance committee and I've served as the vice chair at the high school level. And so, I just wanted to be part of this conversation even though I kind of don't need an endorsement because there is an election, given my circumstances. But thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Marsha. Next is Corbin, is it Bragsted?
Bragsted.
Bragsted, thanks.
Hi. My name's Corbin Bragsted. So, I graduated from Hellgate in 2014. I'm 19 years old, so I'm the youngest candidate by a while. I was asked to run by Forward Montana after I was their intern last semester and at first I was hesitant, but then I decided that it would be a good idea. I think that the board needs a new young voice. It needs some fresh perspectives and I think that I can be that fresh perspective. I was just in high school. I have experienced many of the problems that our education system is facing firsthand. I know the parents, teachers and students personally and I think that I will be great with communicating with them. In high school, I was the chief communications officer for BPA. I also did MUN and Key Club was the other thing that I did. Right now, I'm attending the University of Montana. I am studying political science with a focus in American politics. And so far, the three pillars of my campaign are transparency, equality and equality of education.
Thanks, Corbin. And last but not least, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Trippke and I have lived in Missoula for 20, almost 25 years. I grew up in Maryland and went to school in Dayton, Ohio. Go Flyers, NCAA bracket breakers. And I have four children. My daughter's in the back. And I have three sons, one daughter, and three of my four children will be in MCPS next year. We're in the Target Range District, Target Range District, which has K8. So, I will have three high schoolers at Hellgate next year. I'm running also like Corbin for the Target Range Bonner District, representing the high school level. I spent seven years on the Target Range School Board and I'm very familiar with school board policy and procedures. And I think in looking back, the most frustrating part or things that I encountered on the Target Range School Board were the lack of transparency and accountability, et cetera. It was real frustrating because we, we would try to discuss things and it would be hushed and it was frustrating to watch the public get frustrated too in light of trying to make things more transparent. And, you know, I, when I, when I got off the board a year ago, I told myself and my family that I was done. I had run my time and I wasn't going to do it again. And then low and behold, Heidi Kendall ran and she found a way to be professional and get the word out about things that everybody wanted to know about and do it in a, in a manner that was, that was not controversial and, and something I had tried to find a way to do for seven years and instead I ended up beating my head against a wall. So, just watching Heidi achieve what she did in the time that she did, I, has kind of inspired me to jump back in.
Thanks, Lisa. That truly won't get your votes with me. So, we have, to start off our questions, we have two questions about the same issue. The issue is, should Hellgate, the school district, which is out west of town, be allowed to create its own high school? There's a bill before the legislature that actually passed the legislature and it's on, will be on the governor's desk for this, either veto or signature, that will allow this to happen. So, the question is, how do you all view of the bill and should it, should the governor sign it or not? And then it sort of follow-up questions are, you know, would this cause a, if this were to happen, would this cause frictions to occur between the school districts that could be healthy? And also, if you're against the bill, then, you know, what is your view of how that should be, you know, what are all the alternatives for the Hellgate Elementary School District? And specifically, how do you propose to meet the issues that have led to pushing for a new high school in the Hellgate District? So, let's, let's start with Grace to see how that's working on her end. Grace? And we'll be, you'll do two minutes for each of these answers.
Okay. Thanks, David. So, the Hellgate question is one that I've talked to a variety of people about educators and parents alike. My, my personal feeling is that I am a supporter of small schools. I get why parents would want to have as locally controlled of schools as possible and so I understand why a parent would be excited about the prospect of their child staying in a district that they had been in from the time they were in kindergarten. I, I do get that. But when I look at the question, for me, it's a question of wanting to, to have a net good across the district. And as a trustee for Missoula County Public Schools, my responsibility would be to look to, to map the lies benefit for the students in the county public schools. I think there are many ways that students can have the benefits of smaller schools within the schools that currently exist. And I think the Health Science Academy at Big Sky is a really good example of that kind of innovative program that allows students to be known for a longer duration by a smaller cohort of teachers and to work together in smaller communities. That's, research shows that that's the most successful setup for students. If we were in a situation where the three high schools that exist were bursting at the seams, that would be a different story. But my understanding, and I have a lot to learn, but my understanding is that establishing a new high school within the Missoula Valley would in fact have severe and drastic impact to the three high schools that exist and would have the potential to really damage some of the quality experience that's happening there now. So, as a trustee of Missoula County Public Schools, I could, I would not support that initiative now and that's because of the, the likelihood that the net result would not be to the good of the majority of students.
Next, Grace. And next, Michael.
Thanks, David. I think that there's a lot of issues about the Senate Bill 107 that a lot of people don't understand. I get that from a lot of the constituents up there in the Hellgate Elementary District that they haven't really been fully informed. I think part of it starts out with the basis of, you know, why this issue has gotten to this point. And obviously, it's a statewide initiative, it's a statewide issue, but really what it boils down to is the three districts, Hellgate Elementary, Lockwood and East Helena. Naturally, I'm more concerned with Hellgate Elementary than the other two, so that's what I'll speak to. And I think the, the issue of choice is, is what I keep hearing touted as, you know, we really need school choice. And I think that's great. We do need choice. I believe that the parents and the families in Hellgate Elementary and in all of Missoula have great choices right now. They have three choices for their high schools. Technically, actually, there's, there's other choices too. We have, in this valley, we have our three urban high schools. We have Willard, we have Valley Christian and Moiola. So, there's, the capacity is another issue. So, the choice is there, I think, already. So, that's not going to solve that choice. It's actually going to limit the choice for some of the students or possibly limit the choices. Capacity-wise, here in the valley, in Missoula Valley, we have, like I said, mentioned the number of high schools that we have already. And it would not be fiscally sound to build another high school. We know that what we have is sufficient and we have looked at the demographics and where we're going. We have studies looking forward and we know that especially even in that area, the demographics studies have shown us that while there has been growth out there, looking forward in the next 10 years, it's not there. And actually, there was a story in the paper today that came out that said a lot of the growth is within the town today. The only thing I didn't get to go is, if I was against it, what alternatives? And I guess I would just say that, as I mentioned at the beginning, our choices that we have now are really good for our parents. And the one thing I would like to do is maybe involve the feeder districts a little bit more in our regular meetings. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. John?
Well, I'm sitting next to Marsha Holland and I'd really like to hear what she has to say about this. Hellgate Elementary and Middle School are excellent schools and furthermore, the Hellgate community knows it and there's, there's no denying that I think there's a very active community spirit that's going on there and that is promoting this notion. Even with all the schools that Michael mentioned, the options, none of them are north of the river. And I, we once thought that our growth was going to be in the far reaches of Miller Creek. That hasn't been working out. I still think our growth is going to be in the Grass Valley area, you know, beyond the airport and that gets into the Smith territory. But, so, I think I would prefer that the conversation that our community has is about Missoula County Public Schools seriously considering and moving towards building another high school north of the river. And, and some of that conversation has been going on. But I think we've reached a stage with Hellgate that unless we offer an option like that, there's no going back, that they, they will eventually through legislative process, they'll build their, their own high school. And I have the same feelings that Michael expressed about the fiscal impact on both the taxpayers in the Hellgate District and upon planning in the rest of, in the larger district.
Thank you, John.
Thanks. This is my district, so I care a lot about this issue. I've walked through my district a lot since last April when I saw that the Hellgate Elementary School District was interested in this issue and I didn't find any significant support. I talked to people in grocery stores. I've gone door to door in my neighborhood and it, it appears to me, when you start talking to parents, especially at the middle school age and also at the high school age when kids are already in school, that, that kind of the sentiment is that Hellgate Elementary is a great elementary school and middle school. That's where my son went and it was great. But there's an advantage in going on and meeting different kids and not being trapped with the same kids all the time. And not to say that in smaller communities, that happens all the time, but in Missoula, we have this choice. And I can't say it as eloquently as six Hellgate, or Big Sky sophomore and freshman students came to the Hellgate Elementary School Board meeting this last Wednesday and they told the board members there that although they appreciated the education they got at Hellgate Elementary, they found great value in getting to go to Big Sky. One of them was in the Health Science Academy and she explained that, you know, that what it took to get that program up and running and so successful takes a lot of years and a lot of planning. And this next year, she's only a sophomore now and incredibly articulate, but she said next year she's going to be an IB diploma student at Big Sky, as they were just okay for a Big Sky IB diploma program. And I know from Hellgate having that program, my son took, it's not just about the diploma program, it's also about being able to have those kinds of classes and being exposed to them. My son took a lot of classes. And finally, I guess my concern is the process that is in the bill is very awkward. It requires first a vote about whether you secede from MCPS. It doesn't require that you have any funding ability to build a high school. It simply means you just leave. You don't have to have a high school and you don't have to have a high school for five years. You can just sit there for five years and be a separate district while the kids still go to MCPS. It doesn't explain what happens when that happens. At the school board, maybe one parent asks the board whether they had checked to see whether they thought the bond, a bond sometime in the next five years might be successful in building a new school and they haven't done any feasibility studies to determine even if a bond would be successful in that district, given that we've got the three smallest AA high schools and Big Sky's just over 1,000, so it's the smallest of all the high schools. So, without planning, the author of the bill just seems to not think through the contingencies. And I'm really worried about that need to financial net.
Thank you, Marsha.
Yeah, so like a lot of the other candidates up here, something that I really worry about is the fiscal strain it'll cause on all the other high schools. These schools were really, they're in constant need of funding. So, the idea that we're going to take away from these three high schools to build a new high school and take away from a school like Big Sky, which as you said, is also already the smallest high school in Missoula, that's concerning to me. But also, I think that this could really be avoided. As someone who's running for a seat in one of the feeder districts, I'm running for the, I went to Bonner K through eight and I've spoken with the principal of both of Bonner and the superintendent of Target Range and they both told me the same thing, that feeder districts can feel very neglected and they can feel like they're very outside of the process that is Missoula County Public Schools. So, I think that going forward, the board needs to pay more attention to Bonner, Target Range and Hellgate, other schools like that. So, I think that that's the biggest way that stuff like this could be avoided. But no, I do not support the building of a new high school primarily because of the fiscal strain it would cause.
Thanks, Corbin. Lisa.
I guess sometimes it's convenient to be last because you can agree with most of what's already been said, but having watched my children go through Target Range and K through eight and running with the same children all the way through, I know that they were also ready to kind of go on to bigger high schools with other kids and see what else is out there. The, the financial impact there is also, I do wonder, you know, you don't hear a lot other than in forums like this, what the, what the specifics are of the arguments are for or against. And so, it takes, it's part of this because of the vague language in the, in the proposals. And so, hey, I just, I really appreciate the efforts put forth in these situations because you learn more about the actual proposals on the table and, and again, transparency is right there and maybe that's what we're missing in this process.
Great. Thanks, Simon. This set of questions, we'll start the questions from your side. The next question is about, what are your thoughts on the kind of conflict or is there a conflict between focusing on the core subjects that standardized testing focus on versus integrating the arts into the curriculum? And this is actually a two-part question. So, the second part is, what, how do you feel about the any given child program? Should there be additional funding from SPS to continue that program in the future? So, Lisa?
So, I'm going to have to actually plead ignorance on that one, honestly, because it's not something that we, we worked with at Target Range at all. And I don't know if you're, the any given child, I'm unfamiliar with it.
So, I suppose you do.
No, I do not.
Go ahead. But you can address the, yeah, you can address the first half. Just the tension, is there a tension, how do you resolve it between standardized core subjects like math reading versus integrating the arts in the curriculum?
I'm confused about the question. I, it may be...
So, is there, maybe there's, you know, so is there a tension? So, the question is, is there a tension and if there is, what, how do you resolve?
Personally, I'm not aware of the tension and, and the reason I'll say that is I, based on Target Range and Hellgate, my son is, my oldest son is at Hellgate and he is, he loves the arts and has his choice of classes in there and he is in a mixture of IB and AP classes and excelling in those harder classes. And so, I don't, I haven't heard at all that he is facing any dilemma on that.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same position. When I went to Hellgate last year, or yeah, last year, I, I didn't notice any tension between the two either. I do, or I did notice the importance of arts though, something that I think is often neglected in school districts everywhere when money is tight. It's, those are the first programs to go. I remember there was one year when my art room, they decided to stop having paper towels. That was one of the things that they cut just because they were running out of money. So, I think it's important that we keep these programs funded and because, and another thing is like band. If you go to a Hellgate student that did band and ask them what their favorite part of high school was, I would bet that nine times out of 10, they say that band was their favorite part of high school. And with better arts programs and better things like that, you see lower dropout rates, happier students, more successful students. So, I definitely think it is more, it is very important to keep these arts and other programs open.
Because I'll try to talk fast. Just a quick story. I have a shout-out to Hellgate Elementary. When my son was in fifth grade, he had a teacher named... When my son was in fifth grade, he had a teacher named Cooper and she taught reading and they had leveled reading. So he was in a higher level reading. But what she did all the time is it was, there was art, there were plays. My son learned how to make a quilt that showed the Underground Railroad because they were reading historical fiction that year. They did artwork combined to kind of demonstrate a lot of things. So I think we have a lot of innovative teachers who, I mean, you know, you talk about STEM, you know, science, technology, engineering and math. And I'm a huge, I keep talking about STEAM. I want arts in there all the time. And I think really that's come forward. We now hear that we've adopted Project Lead the Way in some of our middle schools and even elementary schools. And the teachers who talk about those STEAM programs always say STEAM now because it really is critical, I think, to recognize that creative aspect that learning needs to have. I think our high schools are, they have a lot of opportunities for art in them. I, you know, it might be the paper towels that are cut, but the teachers just aren't. And we have great opportunities there and I think kids really take advantage of it very quickly by any given child. We were picked as a community by the Kennedy Center for Forming Arts to become an any child, any given child community. And so although it doesn't come with significant funding, there are a couple of sources of funding, but more it comes with a lot of professional learning and development in trying to figure out how to integrate, especially at the middle school level, arts of all kinds, whether it's performing arts, whether it's like visual arts. So we've had several presentations on, through John Combs, our Fine Arts Director, on how he is implementing that in the middle school. And he's, I mean, if you want to hear someone who's really excited about getting art into the school, just call John Combs. So I think we're doing a good job despite the fact it came with great recognition. It didn't come with a lot of money, but we are finding innovative ways to make sure that we become a really great community because we're the only one, I think, west of Mississippi that's been picked for this honor.
I'm going to try and incorporate STEAM into my thinking. Thank you for that. Never thought of it before. Was this your question, Pam? With your permission, I would have twisted a bit. The tension that I'm most concerned with is between the focus on what we might call academics or three Rs, which is where I come from. But I think the purpose of public education is to move our young people into the community. So I'm more interested in initiatives such as the Health Sciences Academy. At Hellgate, they've expanded their business program so that they even use writing coaches in the, in the business classes. I think it's more important that we emphasize making productive citizens and future trustees out of our younger people. And so, and there is a, there is a huge tension there. I mean, a lot of people just, they want their kids to go to Harvard. And I've got no problem with that. But I think as far as in public education, our policy should be towards our community. Which in my opinion is what the whole trust, I mean, we're willing to be trustees. That's what the trust is about is and the beneficiary of the trust, if we were to write it, is the community, not the individual students at the time. We could probably argue over that for a while. That's my thinking. That's the tension that I find occupies me most and that I think we really have to work on.
Thanks. I don't think there's a great tension. I do think that, I know for instance in some of the middle schools, the arts and the electives is what they're called, they seem to be emphasized less or not seen. I know that you don't get enough time in each one. You get a half a year language, half a year arts or one semester of arts and then you get a fax, which is family and community services. But what we're working toward, what I've really seen good progress in is, and some of this comes from Common Core, but a lot of it comes from the PLCs, which is the professional learning communities that we are using now in all of our schools, is that the collaboration among the teachers is allowing us to integrate more different kind of subjects throughout the, like for instance on middle school, throughout the team. You'll have math, English, or English Language Arts and Social Studies. But they would go with themes and art, I have found, I've seen lately, and this is a step in the right direction, is being integrated into those classes. And I think that's a good way that we can address some of the, what some people might receive as tension, but maybe to give a little bit more attention to the arts. With regard to the any given child program, I think it's a fantastic program from the Kennedy Center. We're one of six great communities in the country, as Marcia said, that was lucky enough to be chosen for this. It is a huge boost to our arts community. We, it, as Marcia pointed out, the training that comes with that, that lasts for a long time. That doesn't go away after, if there's less funding for it. I think it's very important that we find some way to at least attempt to, and that doesn't necessarily mean general fund. We've done a lot of great things with grants in the past and possibly maybe the Kennedy Center continuing this. I know that the Performing Arts Center has been discussed a lot. That's only one kind of art and it would, it would benefit several different kinds, whether it be music or performing arts and stuff like that. But the visual arts too, they're important. And when we move toward that, I think that that's going to be a big boost in that direction. Thank you.
Next, Grace. Thanks for.
Hi.
Hi, thank you, Grace.
Hi, actually, I want to make sure that I'm not okay first. Is that doing okay? Okay.
You go ahead.
I love this question. And one of the reasons that I love this question is that my background is primarily in early childhood education. And when we talk about education, birth to eight, the concept of integrating subjects in order to provide a more learner-centered approach, that is the norm. And one thing that's really exciting that's happening in K-12 education and to a certain extent as well in PK-20 education is that that approach that says we're not starting from the subject as much as we're starting from the learner and trying to integrate all of the different types of learning and communication that a learner might use to approach subject matter and primarily to engage the entire learner in a process of learning how to learn, learning how to communicate well, learning how to express themselves, learning how to collaborate and work together. And most importantly, to be engaged and excited about. So the arts are a critical piece of that. Not only when you talk about STEAM, but also when you look at programs like the Missoula Writers Collaborative and the work that they do to encourage kids to be excited about writing and to express themselves in school. I think one of the great things about any given child, from my understanding of it, is that it looks at ways to connect the public schools to the really exciting things that are happening in the arts in Missoula already. From organizations like the Co-Motion Dance Company that recently performed Fire Speaks the Land for fourth graders from across the district, to the Zootown Arts Community Center, to the Play Studio. These are organizations that make Missoula vibrant and exciting. And these are people that are really contributing, as John suggested, to the community. The arts are actually a very important economic stream in our community and a reason why people like living here. So connecting those organizations to the schools is a great way of helping kids engage, helping them connect to the subject matter and also helping the schools develop those partnerships that help those innovative programs be more sustainable.
So for our next question, we'll reverse the order and Grace, you'll go first. This question is about the decision that was made at the school board meeting on Tuesday, I believe it was, to hire an interim superintendent and lower the salary for the interim position. Do you support that decision? Grace, you want to get started on that?
Okay. I think that given where the school district is at right now, the decision to hire an interim director and to search to do so internally seems, I won't say no reiter exactly, but it sure seems like the smart way to go. There are a lot of balls in the air between the bond issue and the fall to this question of what's going to happen with the Hellgate district. Many, many important unknowns. And to instigate a regional or national search right at this minute to try to put someone in place before the start of the next school year, in my opinion, would have been foolhardy. And at the board meeting the other night, it sure seemed as though it was a very, very unanimous decision and one that I would support. And as far as the salary range goes, I think given that this is an interim position, that salary range makes 100% sense. I liked that Melanie Charleston from the MEA of MFT suggested that that was a very reasonable place to be. That feels important at this juncture and I think going forward, given an opportunity to do a longer search for a permanent, permanent replacement, then that's a question that can be revisited with some time to research and really make sure that it's made with all the input from all the parties that need to be involved.
Thanks, Grace.
Thanks. I think, as Grace said, and you probably hear this a few times in this question, that yes, I think this is a good idea. I think that the interim superintendent is important for the reasons that Grace said. But, and I'll just repeat it, but the time limit that we had, the shortened time period in order, that would take, that we have available to insert a superintendent is, it's not sufficient, I think, to do the job that's necessary to be done in such an important position. We have the benefit of having, I think, I think we will find a great interim candidate within our ranks. These, the person who takes this job from within will be very knowledgeable about the bond. We have been working on this bond for two and a half years. There's been a lot of work that has gone on behind the scenes in committee meetings. And each building's got committees and steering committees and works with architects and engineers and demographers. That's important and also with the community, having to make sure that we maintain those relationships. The long-term, having this be an interim is, I think, also a real good benefit because we can set the schedule for the full search for our permanent replacement that hopefully will start a year from June, or not the search, but the next superintendent, the permanent superintendent. If that so happens, anything could happen between now and then. I really, oh, and for the salary, I think that Diane's suggestion for two times, the highest tier on the teaching matrix was, it's a great starting point. It gives us something to tie it to, at least in the beginning. And then we will find, I hope, in our search that what we end up with in the long term for the permanent fits not only the needs of the district and the needs of the quality person that we want to replace Dr. Pausa with, but that it also fits with our budget needs as well.
As I heard the question, the real question was, do you support it? That's the way the question was phrased. And so my answer is yes. I was at the meeting on Tuesday night. I was squirming in my seat. Had I been a trustee, I would have spoken against the motion because I do disagree with it. But as part of that, the many years of board service that I've had, when a group makes a decision, it's done. You forget about arguments and tensions and you move on. I personally think that the, that it was wrong to to say that we were only going to look internally for an interim superintendent because I believe there would be benefits to opening up that for a bit. I've spoken about my particular disagreement with a couple of trustees, but I support the decision and we've got to move on.
Thanks. I think it's important because there's, there are hiring cycles in education. And we actually missed the window of the hiring cycle to, most of the candidates that are interested have already found jobs on national searches. It's just the nature of that kind of business. And also I think it's important to remember that we have many initiatives, not just the bond, but IB is coming in at Big Sky, IB is continuing at Hellgate. Hellgate has a financial academy that's starting, settles in its, I think, second year of a digital media academy. We've got Project Lead the Way programs at the middle schools, even the elementary schools. And so I think it's, there's great value to look internally because someone will be so intimately familiar with all of those various initiatives. You know, and there's a lot of them and it's what's making our schools so successful right now. And so to bring someone else up to speed on all those initiatives might actually put us behind the curve on also focusing on the bond, which is coming up in November. So I think it was a good idea. I mean, I voted for it obviously and I think it's a good idea to look internally at this point. I think a really good point that was made about the salary was what Mike referenced about Diane Lorenson actually talking with various people around the state and finding out what is a typical salary for a superintendent in this position. And I appreciate that Melanie Charleston and her members support that decision as well. And finally, I really like the idea that we all agree that just because someone internally might be appointed interim superintendent, that doesn't take them out of the running to apply when we do either a statewide or national search. So we may end up having the same person continue in the job because that person will be tremendously successful within that first year. So I really appreciate we've got that option continuing to be open to us.
Yeah, as Marcia kind of listed off, a lot of the things that are going on in the district right now, I just think that there's way too much to be, there's way too much happening for us to be going without a superintendent. So the decision to appoint an interim superintendent was a great idea. I really appreciate the fact that they got Melanie Charleston and the MEA's approval for the salary of the superintendent. I think that's very important that all those voices are heard.
So I also support the decision for the interim. I think we went through quite a few superintendent changes at Target Range and the immense amount of work and time involved to find a quality person with the characteristics that a diverse group of trustees is looking for is time consuming. And the ability to provide continuity with somebody who knows the system and knows how to work through all the, and the facets of all the different programs that we offer can't be overstated. Again, likewise with the salary support from the union, I think that was key to the decision, it sounds like. And I think it's really important to take your time in a decision like this and not rush to judgment to find somebody just to fill the spot and get the exact qualities that you're looking for.
Okay, for the final two questions, we're going to the lightning round, one-minute answers. The first question on the lightning round, I'll start with you, Lisa, is what is one thing that you would hope to accomplish if you were elected?
I think the main thing that I would like to accomplish, and I'm not saying that this is a problem because I'm not familiar enough with the MCPS district, the way it operates, but the one thing I would like to see accomplished, if it's not already, is transparency and at the board meetings for the public, the staff, everybody.
The biggest thing for me is I want to see quality of education in Missoula go up. I don't want to see students with outdated textbooks, leaky roofs, mortar falling from the ceilings. That's probably the most important thing to me. And also equality, I know I kind of cheated and said two things, but it's important that all of our students have the same opportunity regardless of what economic background they come from, where they come from, what disabilities they may have. It's important that we give our students the resources that they need to be successful.
I want the bond to pass. I mean, if this bond passes, it will make so many things possible. And this isn't about, this is what Corbin's talking about. We have boilers that are about to go under. We have roofs that are falling apart, as Corbin can testify, attest to. We've got kids who can't even get on the internet at school because we don't have the bandwidth that is necessary. We have just, the physical plants in which our kids go to school are challenging. And so if we can improve the physical surroundings, then it improves everything. And teachers are really supportive of this bond. And to me, if teachers want their physical surroundings and their infrastructure improved because they understand how important that is to providing a quality education, then I support their decision.
I too think the bond issue is most important. I approach it from a perspective of voter education, our community conversation and how we shape it, how a bond issue is different from the middle levy requests that we, people are most used to seeing on the ballot. And I think that trustees And I think that trustees have a special duty to, bonding is tricky. A lot of it depends upon the external market, and bonds have to be sold, so they have to be attractively packaged. And there's a lot of outside counsel that's helping us with this. But I think we've got both voter education and an additional amount of trustee oversight.
Popular answer here, it's the bond. I think I agree with what my colleagues up here are saying about the bond. It's vitally important. Our job as trustees is to provide the teachers the tools that they need to do their job. They are the ones that are doing the educating. They're the real heroes on our entire team. When this bond passes, it's going to create not just updated boilers and roofs and stuff, it's going to create flexible teaching spaces. We're going to be able to let our teachers do more things with the space and the time that they have. I've talked to a lot of teachers, I've been to every building in our district, and they have great ideas, they are doing some wonderful things with what they have, and I just cannot wait to see what they do with an even improved functional working spaces with, when the bond passes. So, thank you.
Grace.
Hi. Yep, so I have a son who attends Lowell, and so the bond is a very real and concrete reality to me. The bond will radically impact education at Lowell, hopefully while my son is there, but certainly for my neighborhood on into the future, as well as providing so many benefits around the district. But I actually want to add one more piece to the conversation, as since these trustee terms are three-year terms, and this is certainly a long-term commitment to serve. Statewide, early childhood programming is coming into the public school system. It may not pass this year.
Oh, shoot, we lost Grace. We'll see if we can get her back.
Okay.
There you are, good. You're there. You were just in the middle of the early childhood education point.
Ah, okay. So as I said, you know, Montana's one of only eight states that doesn't provide a form of public funding for pre-K education currently. And when that does in fact pass at the state level, I would love to see MCPS be on the cutting edge and really ready to implement excellent programming in our schools. And I would love to be at the table to help guide how that goes. And so I would see that as a more long-term role of serving.
Great, thanks. Okay, so for the final question before our closing remarks, I want to make it a little more lighthearted. I'd like you to tell us a really quick story, your favorite story about your experience in Missoula County schools. It could be something inspiring, it could be funny, it could be something that you learned, something about the schools, you know, whatever. Just tell us a story about that you think is, will help us kind of understand what you value about your potential roles as a trustee. Grace, we'll start with you.
Okay. So as I mentioned, my son is a first grader at Lowell School, and last year, he had an incident happen on the playground that I became upset about, as occasionally a parent does. And are you still there?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, great, thank you. And so I contacted the principal of the school to talk about it. And the upshot of that conversation was that I was invited to serve on the school's MBI Committee, the Montana Behavior Initiative Committee. And so every two weeks, I've been able, and really honored to gather with those teachers and administrators who are working to support kids' social, emotional, and behavioral needs within the school. And what's been really exciting to me, actually, has been to see the level of commitment and passion and engagement of those teachers, and also their willingness, you know, to engage with each other to try to rethink systems, to be creative, to come up with things that are exciting for the kids. And so at Lowell School, in the month of May this year, May is going to be kindness month at the school, and all of the students and teachers are focusing on random acts of kindness toward each other. They're going to be building a kindness tree in order to build a sense of how kind we can be as a community and work together toward a collaborative celebration, which to me is a really neat way of taking what was happening a year and a half ago at Lowell regarding MBI, to just that next level. And anyway, I've been incredibly impressed by that process, and so supportive of those teachers to continue to be creative, and that's part of why I want to serve.
Thanks. I don't think a minute is enough to, there's all this stuff that we've seen. I'm just going to tell a couple of quick little stories. And basically, I am amazed at what the teachers do. Every day that I go to those schools, these teachers amaze me. And I'll start with the kid, first week or two of kindergarten of my oldest son, that was 11 years ago, because he's a junior now. And when he was in school, I went in to be the classroom helper, and I saw Mrs. Giuliani, who no longer teaches, unfortunately, she was great. But she had these 26-year-olds, and I was over doing something on the side, and they were kind of doing six-year-old kindergarten stuff, five and six-year-olds. And she said a few magic words, and she had 20 children kneeling down in front of her and paying attention, and they're all quiet. I had two kids, I couldn't do that. That's when it started, that was the beginning. And I'm going to fast-forward now to, I was in one of my son's classes in Hellgate, as I mentioned, he's a junior. He's taking some IB classes. I was talking to one of the teachers, and she said to me, she has been teaching, I think for 23 or 24 years, and she said that part of the training and stuff that she has experienced, especially going through the IB program at Hellgate, she's lucky enough to be an IB teacher, is that she had, the previous year, she had the most rewarding experiences teaching that one class in her 24 years. And she talked about the abilities of the kids, and how much they grew, and what they were able to do when they left her class. And I was just, the passion that she was talking about, it led me to believe that I know that our kids are in good hands. And again, that's really why I want to get this bond passed, so that our teachers have the right tools. Thanks.
Thank you, Marcia. I do have an anecdote, it's not funny, but meaningful to me. My foster daughter has a daughter, and she's a senior at Big Sky High School. I personally don't think she's going to graduate, but I've had the privilege, the benefit of witnessing the effort that the schools put into graduation matters. And the folks at Big Sky, counselors, teachers, they've come up with all sorts of innovative ideas. We've considered Willard a little bit, so the schools are doing their bit. That's the point I wanted to make.
Two wildly different things. When I was at Hellgate Elementary, I was a robotics coach, because I actually know how to program a computer. And so when I was elected to the board, I asked Dr. Posel if we could look into introducing robotics into MCPS as well, and he ran with that. So not only do I get to follow the high school team on their Facebook page, as they went down to Salt Lake and saw how they were getting the robot on the bus, which was pretty interesting, but they were, I think it's their third year now, and it's an all-districts program, so kids from each of the schools can be involved in this program. And they were very successful this year. But related to that, on our tour of Lowell School this year, I got to see the fourth grade robotics races this year, and all the boys and girls tried to figure out how to get their robot to get a little bit farther. And it was chaos in that classroom, but they were so excited to see that their robots were actually moving forward, and it was just a great collaborative effort. And the wildly different thing is, if you ever want to see something that will inspire you, go to a Willard graduation, the alternative program graduation, especially the more informal one. There's a formal graduation program, but each trimester, since they're on a trimester system, they have a more informal graduation moment as well. And each of the students gets to talk about why, what it took for them to graduate. And needless to say, I was in tears by the time I got through the last trimester's one. But so if you want to see success stories, go to Willard's graduations.
I actually want to talk about my sister. She's a junior at Hellgate right now. And her whole life, she's never really liked school. Me and her are polar opposites. She never really tried, she was just kind of one of those kids. And her freshman year, she took Ag at Agriculture Education, and the way that I've seen that change her life has really affected the way that I look at education. Ever since she started doing that, she's done things like 4H and FFA. We have a cow in our backyard now. We have chickens everywhere. It's chaos. I don't know how she talked my mom into letting us do this, but what it's done to her education is so huge. She's going to school, she's enjoying it, she doesn't like to be late to school anymore. She tries to get out of bed at time, because she wants to make it to class. She wakes up early and feeds her cow every morning, because I refuse to do it to her But it's people like Kyla that I will think about before I make every decision as a board trustee. I think that education is the place where you find yourself, where you find who you are, and where you find who you want to be in this community. And Kyla is now interning at a vet's office, and they recently offered her a job. 16 years old, she's going to be working with vet techs and pursuing her career goals and doing what she wants to do. So I hope that every high school student can find their, find themselves in the way that Kyla did.
So I have two examples also. What my son who goes to Hellgate, he was, he's taken a very rigorous course load with, as I mentioned before, the IB and AP courses. And he loves math and always has, he's always excelled in math. And English is not his forte, but he's taking those same rigorous courses, and he found himself, he's going to kill me when he sees this, but he found himself slipping behind in the fall. And I had ironically gone to the parent-teacher conferences and slipped in right as they were saying, you know, we want the kids to be advocates for themselves, we don't really want to hear from the parents, you know, we don't want the parents saying, my child slipped behind, what can you do? We want the kids to come up and speak for themselves. Well, my son got to the point where he had slipped enough behind where something very near and dear to him was at risk of not being in his opportunity pool at the time, and he was going to lose the love and joy of his life to be able to do this. So I told him I would help him one time, and I would go in and talk to the teachers and say, is there any way we can recoup and come back? And I went into the teacher saying, I know I'm not supposed to be here, and I'm asking you for one chance to come work with me. And she looked at me and she said, you tell Max, whoops, you tell your son to get caught up together, get all this stuff done in one night, and we will get him back on track. This is a kid who lacked self-confidence in himself in English, and I just got back from a second round of conferences where he got a 97 on his latest assignment in this class. And he told me today, his writing has improved so much this year, and he actually likes English. And it's just an amazing, amazing effort to see the turnaround in the confidence of him and the ability to speak for himself and to achieve or excel in a subject. And really quickly, because I know I'm probably getting close to, I work at Cost Care, and this is a different example, but I'm in charge of the wellness program that we provide to MCPS. So half the schools we visit in the spring, half the schools we visit in the fall, and we come in and we do the blood screenings, we've done this for about five years, and we do height, weight, vitals, et cetera. And the very, very, very cool experience that I've had with this is to see the health of the employees improve on a year-to-year basis, and how excited they are to come in. And more so than that, the ability that the administration has taken to provide this for the employees and give them the opportunity to continue to improve their health.
Great, well, thanks. So this has been a great forum. We'll have closing remarks, making real quick, because we'll stick to the minutes rigorously, because we're running a little over, but thank you all for doing this, and please make your final remarks. Mr. Reese.
I just want to say, thanks for having us again, and if anything, this session has enlightened how much is going on at MCPS and how much I don't know. And I look forward to being involved in all of these projects. The bond, like we're saying, is so important, but it's next month, and there's things that, once that's passed, we will be able to do great things with the facilities. There's a ginormous amount of things coming down the pike in the rest of the term as a trustee, and I can only say, we have a lot to learn.
I also want to thank you for having me. In my closing remarks, I kind of just want to go through my three, the three key points of my campaign. That's transparency, equality, and equality. I want the school system to be open to anyone who wants access to it. I want it to be easier to find information. If I've learned one thing while running for this seat, it can be very difficult to find information on the school board, and it can be very difficult to keep up to date with what's going on. So I want to open it up to everyone. For equality, I want everyone to have the same chance at an education. I don't want any disabilities or family ties to get in the way of someone becoming who they are and really blossoming into the community like they should. And for quality, this kind of ties into the bond. I want to see that bond pass. I don't want our students in 2015 to have to deal with leaky roofs, slow internet, freezing cold rooms. It's just the moral thing to do.
Nice.
I want to also thank you. I really like this opportunity to get to hear from my potential fellow trustees, since I won't be on the ballot, and yes, I am a Democrat, I'm a Republican. But I really appreciate that people are willing to step up to the plate for this, because since I've been on the board, I think I've been on the board for six years, and I'll be going into my third term, I think there have been almost 30 different trustees that I have served with in that period of time. And to understand that the community of Missoula has that many committed people who are willing to take this on, and like I mentioned, we don't do it for the big bucks, because there aren't any, and it requires a lot of work and a lot of attention to do it well. So I really appreciate everyone up here willing to step up to the plate and be willing to take this on, because it's, as I tell my husband, it's the most fun thing I've ever decided to do in my life. It's educational, it's interesting, you're doing it for a good reason, and every day a new, interesting thing happens that you have to learn about and educate yourself about, and it's just fascinating.
Well, I'd like to make my closing remarks thank yous. Thank you to the five folks, including Skype and Grace. Here, I've learned from you this evening, and I appreciate it. And of course, audience members, there are some of you that I haven't seen in ages, and it's good to see you again. And I do hope there's an MCAT audience, both live tonight and reviewing this, because these are, I think, important matters, and just as I've learned tonight, I hope that the viewers do. And I'd like to end by saying that part of being a trustee candidate is that I've been going a lot to live board meetings and actually sitting there, which is different from watching them on MCAT. We have a fine bunch of people already who are serving on the board. I hope voters will take the opportunity to watch some of those and augment what they've learned tonight by witnessing the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for having us, and thank you to my co-panelists up here and on the computer, and thank you to the audience, too. I really appreciate the involvement of everyone. I want to say, as Vice Marcia said, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of board members in the past five, six, seven years, and we're lucky to have people that are willing to step up. It is an enormous amount of work. I think it was maybe Marcia earlier had mentioned, we have hundreds of meetings that we go to a year, unfortunately. I want to say, emphasize, we've heard it tonight, the bond, the bond, the bond, that is going to open up doors. My experience, my vocation as an engineer is vital. I think I offer a very important perspective on that moving forward, and I want to be able to share that with the trustees as we move forward for this. And my experience, my history on the board is important. I think we have the potential next year to have up to somewhere between seven and nine board members with less than, with two years or less experience on the board. And I think that my experience on the vice chair, I've been the chair of the PNP Committee, and my time is up. Thank you very much.
Grace, last word. Is that me last, Grace?
She is? Computer died, you'll have to make it back up.
Okay. Grace, are you there?
I'm battery-damaged.
Well, I'm still making noise.
Still making noise.
Looks like we lost Grace.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll let Grace submit a statement at the end. But join me in thanking yous, great set of candidates and their good comments. Thanks. We'll go ahead.